Good evening. Welcome to the November 20th, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Vince Messina from Woodside Bible Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation, so if you would please stand for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening Pastor.
Good evening Mayor. Thank you Council and City officials and on behalf of our senior pastor Doug Schmidt and all of our church family at Woodside Bible Church, we wish all you and your families a happy Thanksgiving. Let's pray please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this abundant time that we can come to you, for the blessings that are ours because of your grace and mercy. Thank you for our families, thank you for our health, thank you for a city to be able to live and to work in like the city of Troy. Thank you for the leadership of this city and their care and concern for the citizens. And Father, we pray that as businesses transacted this evening, that you would give them discernment and wisdom and knowledge. And Father, we thank you also for our first responders, for our police department, fire department, Father, and also our EMS. And ask your protection over them as they serve the community. And we give you praise in all these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Next on the agenda is excuse absent Councilmembers. This is going to be a unique evening for those that are watching and here this evening. I'm going to move a resolution to allow Councilmember Baker to Skype in with us this evening, so hopefully everything goes well. I'm going to read this resolution into the record. Whereas Councilmember Baker is unable to attend the regular City Council Meeting of November 20th, 2017, due to being out of the county. And whereas Councilmember Baker has requested to participate in the council discussion via Skype and in a non-voting capacity during the meeting. And whereas City Council Rules of Procedure Number 29, wire communications by and to Councilmembers during any meeting of council prohibits wire communications, but this rule can be waived by an affirmative vote of the Councilmembers present. And whereas the agenda for the regular City Council Meeting of November 20th, 2017 contains topics that require the input of all members of City Council, including Councilmember Baker, which compels City Council to consider this rare exception to the rules of procedure and attendance requirements of City Councilmembers. Therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby waives Council Rule Number 29, wire communications by and to Councilmembers during any meeting of council, in order to allow City Councilmember Baker to participate in the council discussion via Skype and in a non-voting capacity during the meeting. Be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilmember Baker at the regular City Council Meeting of November 20th, 2017, due to being out of the county.
Support.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Mayor Protem Abraham, that we excuse the absence and vote affirmatively on the resolution that was read into the record by me. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome, Councilman Baker.
Thank you Mayor.
Next on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have two this evening. See, one is a proclamation for the 40th anniversary of Beaumont-Troy. And I would ask Beaumont-Troy President Nancy Sussex to meet me at the podium. I'd be honored to present this proclamation. We'll face this way so that they can see us. Nancy, on behalf of the Troy City Council and the city of Troy, I'd like to present this proclamation to celebrate Beaumont Hospital Troy on their 40th anniversary in the city of Troy. And I'd like to read this into the record if I could and then make the presentation. Thank you. Whereas in 1997, correction, 1977, in response to the healthcare needs of a growing community, Beaumont opened a new 200-bed hospital on the rural farmlands in the city of Troy at 44201 De Quinder. It's hard to believe we had rural farmlands, but they were. Whereas today, Beaumont-Troy has grown to 520 licensed beds at a Level 2 trauma center, offering a comprehensive array of healthcare services, and continuing to develop the needs and meet the needs of a growing community it serves. And whereas Beaumont-Troy offers a wide variety of special services, including oncology, end-of-life care, and inpatient unit with 44 private rooms, which is designed to meet the growing need of cancer care, the hospital has an inpatient rehabilitation unit, offering a complete range of rehabilitation to treat traumatic injuries, stroke, spinal, and brain disorders. And whereas Beaumont-Troy offers advanced care for the ones who matter the most, children. Their pediatric services include excellent emergency care, pediatric after-hours clinic, on-site pediatric subspecialty clinic. And whereas Beaumont-Troy offers a quality cardiac progressive care center, designed to care for cardiac patients requiring heart rhythm monitoring and a higher level of nursing care. The joint and spine surgery unit meets the rapidly growing needs for joint and spine surgery patients. Other excellent specialties include Beaumont Vein Center, interactive medicine, obstetrical? Is that correct?
That's right.
Services, digestive health, and the new Messori Learning Center with simulation lab, clinical skills lab, computer lab, classrooms, and quasi-family auditorium. If you haven't been there, it's just a great facility. And whereas Beaumont-Troy continues to win prestigious awards and rankings such as U.S. News and World Report ranked number six in Michigan and number four in Metro Detroit, a high performing in six medical specialties, diabetes, gastroenterology, and GI surgery, geniatrics?
Geriatrics.
Geriatrics, neurology and neurosurgery, orthopedics, pulmonary, and most connected hospital. And whereas Beaumont-Troy is also a leader in community involvement, giving back to the community, sharing knowledge, and helping their patients take an even more active role in their healthcare. Key programs include Project Search, Faith Community Nursing, and the annual Silent Witness Event. So now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the city of Troy hereby congratulate President Nancy Sussex and all of the dedicated employees at Beaumont Hospital Troy for their 40th anniversary in the city of Troy. And be it further resolved that the Mayor and City Council and City Management join the citizens of this community in celebration of the 40th anniversary of Beaumont Hospital Troy and look forward to being a part of Troy for many more years to come, offering a comprehensive array of healthcare services, community programs, a family-friendly institution with a culture that is caring people, caring for people. Presented this 20th day of November 2017, Nancy, it's signed by myself and all members of the City Council. Congratulations and thank you so much for what you've done for our city and our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you to you and the City Council and the citizens of Troy. We've been, we're delighted to be able to provide wonderful healthcare, health and wellness to the community and the citizens of Troy for over 40 years, and we will definitely continue to do so. So thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is C2, which is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday to Saturday. And I'd like to make this presentation. Am I just reading this into the, to the record or is someone coming up this evening?
You're just reading it into the record Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. This is a proclamation, Small Business Saturday to Saturday, from November 25th to December 2nd, 2017. Whereas the city of Troy celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 23 million small businesses in the United States, representing more than 99% of American employer firms, creating more than 2/3rds of the net new jobs and generating 46% of private gross domestic product. And whereas small businesses employ over 55% of the working population in the United States. And whereas 89% of the consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenues. And whereas 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States. And whereas 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas the city of Troy and the Troy Chamber of Commerce support our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas Oakland County is advocating that we champion Small Business Saturday to Saturday, sponsoring local business participation within our community. So now therefore be it resolved that the city of Troy City Council hereby proclaims Saturday, November 25th to Saturday, December 2nd, 2017, as Small Business Saturday to Saturday in Troy, Michigan. And be it further resolved that the city of Troy and the Troy Chamber of Commerce urges the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday to Saturday and throughout the year. Signed this 20th day of November 2017, signed by myself, all members of the City Council, please remember this proclamation and visit our small businesses during Saturday to Saturday. Thank you. There are no carryover items this evening, so we will move to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. E1 is a rezoning application, file number ZJPLN 2017-0023, which is the proposed 901 Tower Drive north of West Long Lake, east side of Crooks, Section 09, from RC, which is Research Center District to OM, Office Mixed Use District. I see Brent Savanon is here, our Planning Director, to present this, and let me open that public hearing. Good evening Brent.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor Slater, City Councilmembers. The applicant for this rezoning application is Core Partners, and the project is located at the southeast corner of Crooks Road and Tower Drive. You see it here outlined in red. The property is approximately 11 acres in size, and there's a four-story office building on the site with, with a lot of parking. Here's a zoning map. Again, property is outlined in red. What they want to do is amend the zoning map or rezone the property from RC, which is shown in purple, to OM, which is shown in blue, and the nearest OM property is on the other side of Tower Drive to the north. So like all rezonings, the first thing you want to do is look at the master plan and see if the application is compliance with the master plan. You see the arrow indicates where the property is. It's located in the classification that we know as Northfield or North Troy. And in 2015, we amended the zoning, or excuse me, the master plan, and we actually approved a sub-area plan for the North Troy District. And sub-area plan laid out some priorities and some strategies for the district. The number one priority was providing a compatible and vibrant mix of use in that, in that district. And the first strategy to help achieve the priority was promoting service infill through property repurposing. So this application would be consistent with, with that goal. In terms of the zoning ordinance, again, going back to the master plan, excuse me, the zoning map, what they want to do is, again, change the zoning from RC to OM. So I think it would be beneficial to spend a few moments just to compare the two districts. This is a table showing a comparison of uses permitted in the district. It's not a complete list, but it's really intended to provide flavor of the character of these two districts. So the column on the far left is a list of uses, and you notice that for the RC District, offices, clinics, and research and development and prototype development, they're permitted in the RC District. Those uses are also permitted in the OM District. But in addition to those two uses, the district also permits retail, restaurant, service, residential and upper floors, lodging, extended stay, assisted independent living, as well as drive-throughs. So what this district does is it affords an opportunity for the owner of the property to reinvest in and repurpose the building and the property. In fact, in your, in the agenda packet, we asked for the applicant to provide us with a concept sketch showing which, what they'd like to do. It's non-binding, but it's just for informational purposes. I didn't, I didn't put it, project it to the screen here, but they do indicate that once this is rezoned, if it's rezoned, they'll come back with retail development in front of the building, between the building and Crooks. This would allow them to do that. On the screen are standards for rezoning. I'm not going to read all of them, but one of them is that the application is consistent with the master plan. Another is that the rezoning is compatible with adjacent zoning districts and uses. We find that the application meets all of the standards, including the two that I just verbalized. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item, October 24th, 2017. They recommended approval eight to zero, and City Management recommends approval of the application. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you Brent. Any questions from staff or for staff? Means you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see that anyone has signed up to speak on this item this evening, but I will offer the opportunity, if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Henderson?
I move E1 rezoning application, file number ZJPLN 2017 through 0023, proposed 901 Tower Drive, north of West Long Lake, east side of Crooks, Section 09, from RC District to OM District.
Support.
Is that as presented on the yellow sheet that was presented on the table this evening?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve E1, the rezoning application, file number Z, et cetera, as presented in the yellow sheet on the council table this evening. Further questions? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is E2, which is another public hearing for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2018 application. I see Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, is coming forward. Let me open that public hearing. Good evening Cindy.
Good evening Mayor and City Council. As you know, every year Oakland County has us apply to spend our money, and this year we are receiving $143,177. 30% of it can go to public services, so that will remain in our home chore, our yard services. And the other $100,000, we received approval from Oakland County to do a demolition of the parking lot that is adjacent to the community center, just west of the skate park. So we'd like to spend the other $100,000 there, and our application is due in December.
Thank you. Any questions from Council? Councilman Pennington?
This is kind of because I'm new here, but these funds, do they come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development?
Yes.
And then goes through the county?
Yep, through the county.
Understood. What are, what typical things do we use for this?
Well, last year's money, we're going to put a roof on the barn over at the farm. It has to be blight. There's very small areas in Troy that we can spend our money. We've done some sewer projects in the past, sidewalk projects. We've planted some trees. We are running out of a lot of projects because it has to be exactly where Oakland County, you know, says we can do it. Demographics have to be.
How does the, the amount get determined that we get?
The county. Or, well, I'm sure the federal government determines that, and then the county tells us how much we're going to get. We could be off by a couple of dollars, but this is the estimate of what they're telling us that we should spend.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you Cindy. Once again, I don't see that anyone has signed up to speak on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, return it to the table for resolution. We're going to try and save Councilman Henderson's voice this evening. He's struggling with a cold. Could somebody else? Mayor Protem Abraham?
I will move E2 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2018 application and public hearing, as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Abraham and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve E2, the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, 2008 application, as printed. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I see that we have about nine residents that wish to speak this evening. And before we start that, if each, each of you could make sure that you read the public comment rules that are published in the agenda packet. And just to let you know, you have three minutes to speak. When the green light goes on, on the podium and up here at my desk, you'll have three minutes. The yellow light will come on when you have one minute left. Please try to wrap it up at that point, because we will strictly adhere to the three-minute rule. So first I'll call on Ingrid Peoples, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on N1. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much to the City Council for their quick actions over the past week to address the billboard topic. I look forward to hearing your plan to stop future billboards in the city of Troy, as well as to hear your plan for removal of the current ones that have already been erected. I feel these billboards pose a safety risk to our community, visual blight, and it's certainly not the type of luck I am going for in my city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I'll call on Alec Peoples, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on N1. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Thanks for your attention tonight and attention on this issue. As a homeowner that lives right around the corner from one of these billboards, this issue is very important to me. I want to thank City Council for their quick action to create a proposal that covers many of the concerns that we have, visual blight, but most importantly, traffic safety. I already feel like a sitting duck in the left-turn lane on Rochester Road. This will be helped by the coming median, but that's three years from now. Rear-end collisions will still be a concern at that point. This visual distraction obviously doesn't help in a time of focus on distracted driving. There's also a school bus stop directly across the street from the Sharks BBQ located sign. But you've clearly comprehended similar safety concerns in the upcoming proposal, and thank you for creating that so quickly. But I will quickly rescind that thanks, because the councilmembers who were here at the time had a chance to address this issue when it was brought to the City Council's attention at the City Council Meeting on February 6th of this year, but nothing was done. Now is not the time to focus on the missed opportunities in the past, but to focus on the plan for the future. The moratorium is great, but I consider it the minimum required. We need to see a plan to eliminate the billboards that are already up. I understand it may be costly to the city, because they may be legal at the time, but the public safety and visual blight also has a cost. I'd like to hear a plan, or at least a plan to create a plan, to address this. Please realize that the signs haven't even been turned on yet, and they have this large number of complaints and attention. By the way, who regulates the content of these signs? Very large concern. Nonprofit group Scenic America estimates the nationwide total of cities and communities prohibiting the construction of new billboards to be at least 1,500 around the country. Four states have a complete ban on billboard. That's the entire state. Clearly there's precedent here to do this. Your master plan for the Rochester Road Corridor states, and I quote, "Ultimately, the Rochester Road Corridor will become a regional showcase for effective stormwater management and enhancement of the natural environment while encouraging a combination of high-quality land uses. Effective landscaping focused on native plantings and improved land use and access management along Rochester will create a green corridor that provides a high level of service for motorists and which provides an effective natural buffer between high-traffic volumes and people visiting adjacent properties." I don't need to state the obvious, but I will anyway. These billboards do not in any way fit into the vision described in the master plan. If you can't do anything about the billboards that are already up, residents will have to take our own action by organizing against the property and business owners, which is not good for anyone. We can also put pressure on the advertisers as well, but I hope it doesn't come to that. I look forward to hear your comments later tonight. If the moratorium isn't unanimous, I certainly hope to hear the reasons why. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last time that we're going to have clapping in here. Please read the rules in the agenda packet. There is no clapping allowed in the council chambers. Thank you for adhering to the rules. Next I'll call upon Stephen Gornick, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on N1. Good evening.
Good evening Mayor Slater, City Councilmembers and city representatives. Thank you very much for all that you do and for allowing me to briefly speak. My name is Steve Gornick. I live in the J.C. Park area. I was born in Troy, lived here almost all my life. My wife and two children love being Troy residents, were active- My wife and two children love being Troy residents, are active in our church, our neighborhood, and our community. I'm concerned about the new electronic billboards. I feel that they're going to be an eyesore for our beautiful community. Every person with whom I've spoke also shares this concern. I would like to know, are these signs going to be on 24 hours a day, seven days a week? Is the content of the signs regulated? Do these cause distracted driving? And do they cause light pollution? Thank you for considering action on this subject.
Thank you. Next I'll call upon Diane Hill, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on N1. Good evening.
Good evening. I too am concerned about the, the lights. I was looking at, realizing that I can't speak on everything, I only have a few minutes, but there's the Rochester Road, it's so junky and distracting, especially with the new electronic billboards. As a former paramedic and paralegal, I've been a victim of accidents, people distracted. People text, they drive while they're eating, doing all kinds of things. Putting these billboards up is only going to be an added distraction. In fact, we were on Channel 4 tonight at 4 o'clock, and they visited, revisited the issue at 6:00. So the community as a whole is watching, and a lot of people here, I'm sure, are very interested in what happened with these billboards. I'm sure law enforcement is concerned. As a former first responder, I would be concerned. Rear-ending driving, driving at night, I'm not a night driver, but even my own vehicle driving at night with the new light beams that they have in cars is distracting, hurts my eyes. But those lights are distracting. And so I think that, along with a lot of other things on Rochester Road, that I just don't know whose idea was, who is getting paid for these signs to be erected where they are? Somebody's palms are getting greased because those things will pop up and sit on anybody's property. They belong, the property they're sitting on belongs to somebody. Who does, who's renting that property? Who's getting paid? Who owns these billboards? Does anybody know this? Do you know the question about any of this?
Ms. Hill, this is an opportunity for you to speak.
I am speaking, I'm just giving you an idea about how passionate I feel about this. These things are an aberration.
I share your passion, it's just that there's not an opportunity for us to talk about.
I know this, you don't have to talk back, I'm just putting these ideas in your head about these questions that we've all discussed and talked about because we're all concerned. We have an app that belongs to a lot of neighborhoods. We've all been chatting about this, about 1,000 people belong to this app in all the neighborhoods. So a lot of people are concerned, maybe not be here tonight, but they're concerned nonetheless. For their safety, for their children, getting rear-ended, people, like I said, pulling out of parking lots and seeing those lights flashing at night is, to me, bothers me. Like I said, I'm not a night driver, but I don't want to drive on Rochester Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I'll call upon Jeremy Rowe, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on N1.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and thank you for saying my last name correctly. I think it's the first time ever in a public forum I've had my last name said correctly. Feel good about that. I'm speaking today on behalf of all the other residents, obviously. I am a resident of Troy, I've only been here about two years. Both me and my wife have kind of settled down roots here, we're actually working on forming a family here. So we settled on this property, and I'm speaking more kind of from the heart than having a piece of paper in front of me, but as you can tell, a lot of people feel the same way that I do. I live right off of Rochester Road and Waddles, so I see that sign that's always constantly on the southbound side of Rochester. I see it on my way home every single time. It's an eyesore. And there's really no getting around this. I understand that there's obviously a need to have more advertisement here to encourage more commerce, but I do a lot of business on Rochester Road. To see more advertisements and billboards in my face, and especially in my wife's face, it doesn't seem like it's something that just works well. I mean, we can do, there are plenty of ways to advertise businesses. We have supercomputers in our pockets, we have access to the internet, there are plenty of other ways to communicate businesses. I'm concerned about the content of those billboards, I'm concerned about when they're going to be on, when they're going to be off, what times they're going to be on, how much light pollution is there going to be, how much distracted driving is there going to be because of these billboards. My wife works in insurance, for an auto insurance company, she sees accidents every single day. We don't need to see more of these in our city, just plain and simple. So if there's a way that we can resolve this and still have, get rid of these billboards, but yet still encourage commerce within the city, I'm all for it. But I think these billboards are the wrong way to do, to do business in the city. And honestly, if we're going to continue just to pollute in our city with, with more advertisements, with more billboards, I don't know why I would continue to stay here in the city. I'd rather go somewhere else where there, where I know there's going to be that type of pollution around. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next I'll call on David Barron, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on N1. Good evening.
Good evening. I can understand making a mistake and allowing for one massive out-of-place digital billboard to go up, but I have counted three, and I've heard there are eight in total. This is a total disrespect for the taxpayers and disrespect for the schools that until recently have been, is what Troy has been known for. This will hurt the credibility of the schools, as I said, in this area, since Troy will be now known as the likes of Grashit, Vegas Strip, Skid Row, to name a few that I've heard lately. I'm trying to drive the current taxpayers and families out of the city within the boundaries of 14 mile and 18 mile, or 20 mile South Boulevard, which is arguably the heart of Troy. Anyone who actually lives in this area can see that this is short-sighted and a disruption to a community. Even Paula Tuckman of Channel 4 referred to it, to Rochester Road, as "the strip." This will be a distraction for drivers, and young drivers especially. These billboards unfortunately are what Troy will be known for. This is to the council, the mayor, zoning specialist, and city planner. You have all, you all have our attention in the city. With all the decisions that you have been making lately, you have both divided us and brought us together due to your decisions. Thanks.
Thank you. Next I'll call on Diane Barganski. I'm not sure if I got that right.
Yeah, right.
Wow. Two, two today.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and this is about the billboards that are erected on Rochester Road. I think they should be removed, even before they get lit up. The owners of the signs, I understand they got permits for signs, but these are not signs, these are billboards. And I just don't believe that citizens of Troy want billboards in our, in our city. That's pretty much all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Michael Kianka, Troy resident, wishes to speak on N1. I think I missed that one. Is it Sianka?
Sianka, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. I believe that if anyone is interested, I believe that the app that the previous resident was speaking about, I'm pretty confident is the Nextdoor app. There is a lot of activity on this topic of the billboards on that app, and I'm just here to voice my support of an exploration to remove the signs and support the proposed amended ordinance to prevent the construction of future billboard signs in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I'll call on Tim Frazen, business owner who wishes to speak on N1.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City council members. I'm going to try not to repeat what everybody else has said. I know our, our time is valuable, and I know that I've sent you information that I'm sure that you, many have commented on, that you've read and understood where we're coming from. I've got to tell you, two weeks ago, I wake up, come to work, I'm about 300 feet away from the one on, near Sharks Barbecue, and all of a sudden I see this huge sign. A huge sign, a pole 24 inches wide, at least a diameter. And I asked myself, my God, Kroger's got a 10-foot sign, I've got a 10-foot sign, what is this 30-foot or 25-foot sign going up? Well, I find out it's not a sign. The city wants to call it a sign, but it's a billboard. For those who don't know what a billboard is, and I'm sure you all do, I would think that most people do, they've been around long enough. In fact, the city had zero up until the beginning of the month. And now I understand there's going to be six or eight, I know there's four up. What happened? What, what happened to convince those who are in guard of the city from allowing these billboards to go up? We're talking about 200 square feet of high-definition digital equipment. Do you ever walk by a TV store and get distracted by a TV with its brilliant colors? You're going to be looking at it. And unfortunately, the city folks, they don't know about this yet. The only reason these folks here, they, they read about it in Facebook, or they saw all these poles going up as well, but the city doesn't know about this. If that one on Rochester Road was lit up for the last week, you would probably have 1,000 people here. Ladies and gentlemen, this is wrong. Now, I spent about 32 years in marketing, I should be gung-ho about getting a message out there. But these boards, due to the First Amendment, can just about have anything on them that somebody wants to pay for. Anything! And you can make, leave it, leave it to your imagination because I'm not going to go ahead and go there. But zero billboards. The city has fought it for decades to have, not to have billboards. They have fought lawsuits not to have billboards, but for some reason, all of a sudden, we got signs going up that are really billboards that someone decided was good for the public. I'd just like to thank the council for doing, for taking quick action on this. I don't know how all this happened, but as the other members, that other folks that spoke, we can't have these remain.
Mr. Frazen, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes, those that have signed up to speak on public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. This is an opportunity for City Council or City Administration to respond or reply to public comment. Councilman Hamilton?
I'm saying this as a, not as a representative of the city, but personally, I, I'm opposed to these billboards, I'm on the same page. I grew up at Long Lake and Rochester Road, I worked at the McDonald's right next to the Sharks Barbecue, and I, I, I'll pledge to do what I can to legally prevent these going up in the future and to try to mitigate the ones that there are. Whatever we can do legally is, is what I'll try to do. I'm, I'm also an auto safety engineer, so I, I hear your concerns about the road safety issues as well. So thanks, everyone, for speaking, I'm on the same page here.
Thank you. Anyone else from council list to speak at this point? I know this item is coming up later this evening, but response to public comment at this point, Councilwoman Hoderick.
Just want to thank everyone who did take time to come out tonight, who have taken time to email us and to communicate with us with great professionalism and care, and it's very appreciated. We will continue this conversation, obviously, but thank you for participating and for being here with us tonight.
Thank you. Any other comment from council? I'll just say, quite often when we have residents come up to the podium, sometimes it gets unprofessional. I want to thank you for being very professional this evening in your comments. And believe me, we're paying attention to the emails, we're paying attention to your comments, and we'll be talking more about this later on this evening when this item comes up, and we'll do everything that we can. Next on the agenda is regular business. There are no postponed items this evening. There are no board and committee appointments this evening, there are no board and committee nominations this evening. There is not a request for closed session this evening, so we will move to I4, which is the standard purchasing resolution 8, which is the best value award and budget amendment for facilities condition analysis and assessment. I see Dennis Drantham is here to give us an overview of this, our new facilities and grounds manager. Good evening, Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for this opportunity to present a proposal for facilities condition assessment analysis tonight, future planning for our facility needs. Back about mid-September, Purchasing put out an RFP to several companies through Mitten and local vendors as well, soliciting a proposal for a facilities condition assessment analysis. Mid-October, the proposal was received and a committee was formed of Mark Miller, Director of Economic Development, or Economic and Community Development, Kurt Bovinsie, Public Works Director, and myself, the Facility and Grounds Operations Manager. Upon reviewing the eight proposals that we received, we scored them on a metrics of experience being 30 points, work plan and timeline being 45 points, and project cost being 25 points, looking for the best value. We brought forward the two highest scores, and we also increased our committee for the interview process and added Steve Vandette, the city engineer, as well as Mitchell Grushnick, the building official and code officer, or code inspector. Through both processes, Integrated Design Solutions of Troy was the selected company through the scoring as well as through the interviews, at a cost of $123,112, a timeline of 16 weeks. Our assessment report will, will contain all facilities owned by the city of Troy. That would be the, the properties here at the Civic Center, as well as DPW, the restrooms in the parks, the historical village, and things of that nature. What we'll receive is an analytical tool that will enable us to, to manage our maintenance, to look at our building systems. Our building systems are the HVAC system, the electrical system, plumbing, interior finishes, flooring, roofs, millwork, casework, things, things of that nature. The process of gathering the technical information will also be inputted into our current City Works system that we use to track maintenance and GIS plots around the, the city, so we can more effectively manage our maintenance. The estimate will also contain cost estimates at the current market analysis, so what does it cost to, to remove this deficiency at the current market analysis or market capital improvement strategy? So this is probably my, my biggest, my biggest passion in this whole presentation here, and it'll come up again, is we have to have the ability to, to plan for our capital improvement. We can't be surprised by $600,000 roofs that need to replace or, or system failures that we just don't know what we're going to find the emergency funds for. So if we can plan those, we can predict those, we can move forward. The other thing that we'll receive will be a facilities condition index of all 59 facilities. So a facilities condition index takes the value of the building, what costs to replace it, as well as the cost of deficiencies, and they'll, they'll plug it into a formula, and it'll, it'll give us a number back on a scale as to, is it more cost-effective to replace this facility, or is it more cost-effective to invest funds in this facility and renovate or improve? The asset information that we'll get back will be deficiency by building system, so deficiency by HVAC, by plumbing, by transformers for electrical, by priority, so what's our priority 1, what's our priority 2, and so forth. Deficiency by category, is this purely an aesthetic thing? Is it just something that doesn't look pleasing to the eye? Or is this an ADA issue that we, we are currently in compliance with, but maybe we're grandfathered in because it's not a safety issue, if you will? Then the multi-year expenditure forecast, they'll provide us with a forecast of three years, five years, 10-year, 15-year analysis of what we can expect to spend. Again, this goes back to planning. The ability to plan for capital improvement and budget, the replacement of building system is imperative to our future. We can predict some of the failures, we can say they have a five-year, 10-year shelf span left on them, and we can begin planning for that money, for those repairs. As we grow and evolve into the city of tomorrow, we must know that our existing facilities can support the needs of tomorrow, and that's kind of what this will give us. And that's kind of what this will give us. While I've only been in my position here for six weeks, I've been an employee for the city for seven months, and I can see there's, there's things that we do here that, from a maintenance standpoint, we do a fantastic job at it. But there's other things that we can improve, and this will be a great tool for us. And I truly believe that we must move from a reactionary service to a proactive service, and this will get us down that road as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Dennis? Thank you, Dennis. Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move I-4, Standard Purchasing Resolution 8, Best Value Award and Budget Amendment for Facilities Condition Analysis and Assessment as printed.
Moved by Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Hamilton, that we approve I-4, the Standard Purchasing Resolution 8, Best Value Award and Budget Amendment for Facilities Condition Analysis and Assessment as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks for all the hard work on this, and it sounds like a great idea. Next is the consent, consent agenda. Anyone on council wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Protam Abraham, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet this evening. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. K-1 is a announcement of public hearings. There are none submitted this evening, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I will call upon Craig Chamberlain, Troy resident who wishes to speak. Good evening.
Good evening. I am president of the Rain Tree Village Homeowners Association, here to share some good news about the stormwater detention pond in the Rain Tree Village subdivision. On Saturday, October 28th, 72 6th graders from Baker Middle School and 37 parents each contributed an hour of community service time to cut and pile up invasive buckthorn trees growing around the pond perimeter. They were so industrious that by the end of the final shift, there was no buckthorn remaining to be cut. The results of their efforts are shown on the slide. We also express our appreciation to Baker Middle School teacher Joseph Schmidt, who coordinated and helped supervise the event. Because the city has an interest in the unimpeded flow of water throughout the pond, the Department of Public Works participated by removing the piles of buckthorn cuttings. We want to especially note that the city crew did an excellent job in cleaning up after the removal. Our homeowners association now enters a monitoring phase to watch for any new growth of buckthorn around the pond. We're also working to remove fragmites, another non-native plant species that has appeared in the pond. There is still buckthorn in the forests in our subdivision and throughout Troy. RVHA acknowledges that the DPW removed the buckthorn piles in this instance, specifically because it was growing around the stormwater detention pond. This partnership was effective, however, in removing hundreds of buckthorn trees. The city may want to consider allocating resources to support the removal of buckthorn throughout Troy by volunteer groups. There may be other volunteer organizations in Troy that could cut and pile buckthorn, but that have no financial resources to pay for the final step of removing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the good news. Any response from council or city administration? City Manager Kishnik?
Well, I would just reiterate that the president of the Rain Tree Homeowners Association, Mr. Chamberlain, have done a great job working with city staff and Kurt Bovensee and Bill Houdery to not just clean up, which was a major undertaking, but also make sure that the stormwater retention is working well. So it started off as a, as Mr. Chamberlain can say, it was, you know, we, we all didn't know how to fix this situation, but everybody came together, and it's working really well. So it's, it's nice to see Mr. Chamberlain come up.
Absolutely, absolutely. Councilwoman Hoderick?
Mr. Chamberlain, I met you discussing this some months back. It's, the picture doesn't do this justice of what they achieved, that volunteer group, the coordination. It probably doesn't seem like a, a real big deal, but I know there was a lot of effort in communicating, planning, coordinating with the city. Thank you, city staff, for stepping in there, and thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. You know, the, there's lots of unsung heroes in communities, and I, I think some of them are the people that step up for association leadership to, to make sure their neighborhoods are strong. And this is an example of a really positive effort, and I thank you for reaching back to us to let us know about this outcome. And you're right, there's a lesson to be learned here, and a best practice that can be shared, hopefully, around the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Next on the agenda are council referrals. There is one council referral this evening, N-1, which is a council referral from Councilmember Henderson to impose a temporary moratorium on the issuance of permits for any new ground signs in the city of Troy that exceed 100 square feet, and to direct city administration to initiate the process to research and review the sign ordinance provisions to protect health, safety, and welfare and property values in the city of Troy. Council, Councilman Henderson, this is your referral. I know you're struggling with your voice, but I think this needs to be read. And it's, I know it's lengthy, but I think it does need to be read in the record. Did you want to do that, or did you want somebody else to?
Probably won't be able to get through the whole thing.
We have a volunteer. I'll do it if you, Councilwoman Hoderick, do you want to do it?
No, go ahead, Mayor.
Are you sure?
I apologize, but this started out one sentence and turned into many.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right. Okay. I know for sure he does have laryngitis, so I feel bad for him. He's been coughing for two or three days. Whereas, the city of Troy, Michigan, has an ordinance that regulates signs in the city of Troy, including large elevated digital signs in the city's business districts. And whereas, in adopting the ordinance, the city previously determined that proliferation of signs in the city is unduly distracting the motorists and pedestrians, creates a traffic hazard, and reduces the effectiveness of signs needed to direct and warn the public. It was also determined that the appearance of the city is marred by proliferation of signs. It was also determined that proliferation of signs restricts light and air. It was also determined that proliferation of signs negatively affects property values. It was also determined that proliferation of signs results in an inappropriate use of land. The purpose of the ordinance is to control the occurrence and size of signs in order to reduce the aforementioned negative effects. It was also determined that signs of least value to people within the city are those which carry commercial messages other than the advertisement of any product, service, event, person, institution, or business located on the premises where the sign is located or indicates the sale or rental of such premises. And whereas, the city has recently received a number of applications for very large elevated digital ground signs which exceed 100 square feet and which are proposed to be located on major thoroughfares in the city, including but not limited to Rochester Road Business Corridor. And these large signs are currently allowed under Troy's sign ordinance provisions. And whereas, upon information and belief, several of the recently permitted large digital signs carry commercial messages other than the advertisement of any product, service, event, person, institution, or business located on the premises where the sign is located, since there are existing business identification signs on the property, resulting in a disproportionate and excessive amount of signage on selected properties. And whereas, the recent influx of large digital ground signs has proliferated the city's business corridors and has generated a number of complaints from residents and businesses. And whereas, the Troy City Council still remains concerned about the potential negative impacts from sign proliferation, and that these large digital ground signs exceeding 100 square feet are illuminated, therefore are likely to cause distractions for drivers as well as resulting deterioration of property values in the city of Troy. And whereas, the Troy City Council intends to research and review its existing sign ordinance provisions and determine if amendments are required in order to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare. And this review would likely involve the Troy Planning Commission, residents and business, and the business community, and such a comprehensive analysis is likely to take approximately six months. And whereas, the Troy City Council is concerned that the issuance of any additional large ground sign permits during this comprehensive review process may result in future nonconformities if the ordinance is amended, and also is likely to detrimentally impact health, safety, and welfare. One sentence, eh? Now, therefore, be it resolved that as of the 21st day of November 2017, which is tomorrow, the Troy City Council hereby imposes a 180-day moratorium prohibiting the city, Troy City Administration, from processing any permit applications for any new large ground signs that exceed 100 square feet. This moratorium will allow consideration and evaluation of Troy's sign provisions. If the complete process is completed in less than 180 days, then the Troy City Council has the option to pass a subsequent resolution terminating the moratorium prior to the expiration of the 180 days in its sole discretion. Be it further resolved, the Troy City Council hereby directs city administration to initiate a process for review of the Troy sign code provisions, and especially the provisions allowing for ground signs with displays in excess of 100 square feet. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve N-1 as printed and read into the record this evening. Discussion, Councilman Henderson?
And I'll make this brief, but this could have been submitted by any one of us. I know that we've all gotten a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, and we certainly, the sign ordinance that we have has been in place for decades. It was last reviewed, I think, in 2010, 2011, somewhere in that area. And I think these signs or billboards certainly meet the letter of the law, but they don't necessarily meet the spirit of our laws. And I, I appreciate a business's ability and desire to put forth the message that they're open for business, but anything other than that is, is very difficult for us to, to have to deal with, especially at the 20, 20-foot by 10-foot level and with unknown brightness of these signs. So that's why I put this forward, and I would appreciate all your support.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the same page as you, Councilman Henderson. What I'll promise is I'll make sure to thoroughly review any, any reports that come up from all our different committees and boards, so we can find these things quickly. And I'll try to be as open as I can to focus on whenever permits like this or ideas like this come before us. So I'll, I'll do my best to communicate that to the city of Troy, so, and thank you for acting quickly on this.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Thanks for, Councilman Henderson, bringing this forward. We were all taken aback by these monsters that came up on Rochester Road. Unfortunately, there is eight permits pulled. We'll do everything in our power to stop any new ones and do what we can with the ones that are currently under construction.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Henderson, for, for being quick to action on this. I was trying to digest exactly what was happening, and frankly, was taken aback by it, just as the residents were. I know one resident mentioned that had, had been in one of our council agendas. It was in there as a report. It wasn't a presentation. It wasn't something we voted on. And I will own that I read it and did not, it did not register with me what this meant. It's a very brief report. I think a learning from it might be, if you knew everything that was in these agendas that come out to us every, every other week, and we try to look for these things, I guess I would personally like to make a request that something like this that's in there be red-flagged somehow from staff as our city processes allow, because I agree, it, it flies in the face of our master plan for Rochester Road. And I apologize that I missed it. I'll own that. And I will also own correcting the processes of communication of something like that, because we should have, all of us would have reacted. So that said, going forward, I think this is a season when the analogy of Bedford Falls versus Potterville kind of comes into play, and I think that's what we're feeling with our Rochester Road as residents of Troy. Even those of us who don't live right along there recognize this changes the character and flavor from a master plan. And we share your frustration and your concern. And with this resolution, when, when we vote on it, we will have effectively directed staff to work with us, so we can do everything in our power to address this. I commented on the professionalism of all of you when you've come forward. I have been reading everything I'm seeing on social media. There's equal professionalism there. I think you're representing the spirit of Troy very well with the dialogue. In essence, you're picking up pitches, pitchforks and torches and coming in to say, hey, wait, this isn't what we are as a community. This doesn't represent us. And I guess I'm saying I want to pick up the pitchfork and torch with you professionally with the consultation of, you know, there's legal matters to this that we'll have to sort through, and we'll do our best to represent you as we do that with the experts, with our staff. That's the plan for the plan. I think somebody was asking, we can't affect that plan from the table, but we can assure you we will work on a plan to work on this. And we really appreciate your involvement and your voices in the process. And we really appreciate your involvement and your voices in the process.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Henderson, for bringing this resolution forward. I have lived in the city for 41 years. I've seen Rochester Road developed. It's always been a major artery for the city, and it's only continued to grow. But this isn't the vision that we had for Rochester Road. How an ordinance that's been in place for 30 years and has protected us from large signs like this, how it suddenly has been, I'll say, overthrown and now have eight sign applications for these large signs is a mystery to me in some sense. And frankly, I take it as a personal affront. As Councilman Henderson said, maybe the signs meet the legal intent, the legal reading of the law, it doesn't meet the intent. This is not what we had in mind for Rochester Road. So I'm pleased that this resolution not only puts a moratorium on these large signs, but I am hoping we can get direction from council through this resolution to direct city administration to uphold these ordinances. Sure, these very large signs meet the letter of the law. And once they're turned on, I expect them to continue to meet what's clearly in our ordinance as we work through what avenues we have legally going forward and with the signs that are in place now. To the community, I say, we hear you. I don't think you here, any one of us up here at the table, pleased with these developments. Eight signs coming up in a matter of two weeks. I've never heard of such a thing before ever. And I'm not sure what forces are in play that have caused this, but we're going to get down to the bottom of this, and we're going to fix it going forward.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. If you all were listening to me this way, I feel like, let me just first say, I apologize for not being there. A person had this trip planned prior to this meeting agenda being released. And I'm sorry I'm not there to look at all of you directly in the eye and hear your concerns as you came forward at the podium. But rest assured, I was listening. I've talked to you on the phone, and I could see you standing at the podium, which was kind of interesting being so far away. But if I may, I actually have a couple of questions first, Mayor, and then if I could make some comments. My first question, I just want to make sure, were any additional applications submitted to the city regarding any kind of signs like this or billboards once this agenda got released? Did anything come in today that we need to be worried about? I don't know who can answer that.
He's coming forward. I believe we received one on Friday, but it was a different application, Paul Evans. Do you want to come to the microphone, please? Is that correct?
Right, we did receive an application on Friday for a sign, a ground sign more than three times this size down by I-75 in Maple Road area, actually, yeah, off of Chicago.
Did you hear that, Councilman?
Are there any compliments about these signs on Rochester Road or the other ones? I mean, not the same company that has these applications? Have we got these approved?
Correct. Correct. It's a different company.
Right, it's a different company than the eight that we've been talking about tonight.
My next question is one who's not for you all, it's actually for the city attorney, if I may. And I'm not going to talk about legal issues up at the table. I know that's not smart for you. But I do have one potential question. As I've heard the mayor read this resolution into the record, and I also thank Councilman Henderson for bringing it forward. Like he said, I think any one of us could have done it, but I very much appreciate you taking the lead on this, Councilman. The city attorney group, the one line in the third paragraph says that, it concerned me when I heard it as a lawyer, frankly. It says that, "And these large signs are currently allowed under Troy's sign ordinance provisions." I don't want to talk about legal strategy. I know that's not proven, like I said. But are there any ramifications for this council approving an ordinance tonight that states that those signs are currently allowed under Troy's sign ordinance? Can that come back to hurt the city in any way in the future should we get to that point?
Mayor?
City Attorney Bloom?
Actually, it is a fact. It is relating to the size of the signs. And under our current zoning district, the size of the signs are permitted. However, we don't know what is on the signs. We don't know. They have not been illuminated yet. So that remains to be seen.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were ratifying something that could later come back to bite us. I hope you understand that. And my other quick question is, this referral addresses the issue of size, the issue of height or anything like that. If I leave this, would somebody, even if we have this moratorium, come and apply for a digital billboard that was 100 square feet, 25 feet high, as long as it met the other setback requirements? Is that a fair statement?
City Attorney Bloom?
I'm going to defer to our...
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Evans.
So I'm just refreshing my memory on the sign code that regulates height relative to size area.
While you're doing that, we have signs currently that are 100 square feet, correct?
Yes, we do. Yeah. So what the sign code says is the maximum height of a sign cannot exceed 20 feet in height and 100 square feet in area. So you can't exceed either of those. So actually, I would opine that it's very possible that somebody could have a sign that's up to 25 feet tall under the current provisions, but not be over 100 square feet. I couldn't tell you if one could be designed like that, but according to the numbers, that's what could happen.
And I guess that was my concern. We're up here at the table, I'm not at the table, but we're talking about, and we all want to do everything we can to make sure this particular issue doesn't happen while we can sort everything out. Is it, does this referral need to be amended to include language about the height of signs? Because I'm pretty sure that any one of the people who spoke tonight would be just as offended by 100-square-foot digital billboard along Rochester Road, especially at that height. You know, I understand that, like Lady James, for example, has a digital sign that's lower to the ground. So I'm wondering if it's the issue of height and the size and the lumens. And so does this, I guess for my other council members to consider, does this referral do enough to satisfy what we need to do in the meantime to stop anything worse from happening? And I'm not there to make amendments myself. I apologize for that. But I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed. Maybe I'm overthinking it, and maybe this is satisfactory as it is. But I needed to bring that to somebody's attention. So that was my, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And if I could just make one more comment. I have no more questions. But I do want to say again, thank you for all who spoke tonight in opposition to these billboards. It did come as a shock to me, as it did to all of you. I know that. I've spoken with several of my fellow council members. And we all are definitely, we're working together to try to figure out what we can do to figure out what happened here. I, of course, support industry in our city and support free speech, as we all do. But we definitely have concerns when what appears to come out of nowhere are these new billboards in our city that are so opposite of what the city and community has been about for so many years. So my personal assurance to you is that I will do everything I can to be a voice for your needs and your concerns and to come to the council table and speak with my fellow council members and citizens to come up with something that makes sense for our city and keeps the community beautiful, because we do have a beautiful city. And I would also like to say, you know, with Rochester Road, we have, I've been hearing lately of people expressing concerns about some properties on Rochester Road that need to be redeveloped or have been sitting idle for a long time. Obviously, those are private property issues. The city dictate any of those. But it definitely, Rochester Road has the absolute potential to be a beautiful boulevard in our city. I know we're widening it, widening parts of it next year beyond. We're trying to get it up to speed. You know, anything we can do to keep Rochester Road and nearby residents and all of our residents happy with what they do with every day. We're going to definitely do it. I will. So again, thank you for letting me come in via Skype. It's a little bit strange, like I said, but this is an important issue for me. And because it kind of came to us so fast, it was important for me to try to work with city staff to make this happen. So thank you. Again, I can't participate in any voting or amending if it needs to be done, but I'm definitely here listening right at the table, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. City Attorney Bloom, did you want to respond to that height issue?
Yes, thank you. First of all, you know, city administration, we did consider what we needed to put in and what is that magic number. There was some concern that for a new business that's locating in the city, you didn't want to preclude them from having their identification signs. And so that's why we picked the 100 square feet. I would just also indicate that there's a proportionality. It's very unlikely that you're going to see something that's 20 feet high, and it'd be a little disproportionate, I think. So I just wanted to mention that. So yes, council can amend the ordinance if they want to. We were trying to find something that made sense. Obviously, we're going to act on this as quickly as we can. We're hoping it doesn't take six months, but we wanted to provide enough time so that if it does, that the city was protected.
Yeah, the way the ordinance is today, somebody could have come in and put a 25-foot, 100-square-foot digital sign up there, and nobody has chosen to do that. So the chances of that happening are probably slim to none. But just a point on that is we are going to look at revamping the ordinance. And that's, we're going to take several things into consideration. It's not just this particular, you know, this has kind of started it, but we've been talking about redoing the ordinance for quite some, the sign ordinance for quite some time. And we're going to be looking at different parts of this ordinance that needs to be addressed also. Councilman Henderson?
Just as a point, excuse me, Shark's Barbecue sign is rather high as well. And it's a pretty small sign. I think McDonald's Golden Arches is pretty high as well. And I just have a question about, do we have any businesses that we know of that are coming in that are new that are going to need signs in this 180-day period of time that you know of?
Not of any new businesses, no. I haven't had discussions with anyone.
Any other comments, any questions for Mr. Evans? Councilman Pennington?
So I got one more. So I just want to get this straight, just for my own clarification, Paul. Is it, so I'm getting this right? He could have built a bigger and a taller sign? Is that possible?
Well, then what's out there now?
Yes, other than what they put up?
No, the code would, they maxed out at 25 feet tall, 200 square feet in area, with a setback of 30 feet from the right-of-way. That's the maximum they could go there.
So they studied it, and they maxed out in every way they possibly could?
They did max out, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to comment on something that I think all of the residents who spoke up tonight mentioned, and that's safety. Please know that this council takes safety into consideration in every decision we make. Certainly, five or seven years ago, when the distracted driving ordinance was put into place, it wasn't necessarily popular. But the decision was made to move forward with it because the public safety aspect of it was critical of importance to us. We're not going to shy away from this. Safety in distracted driving is important to us. It is factoring into how we're approaching this. And certainly, as we evaluate different ways that we can amend the ordinance, whether it's height, whether it's the number of lumens, whether it's the size of the sign, the intent is to keep our community safe in addition to removing any visual detractions.
Questions for Mr. Evans? Councilman Hamilton?
Yes, my question is, if someone did, if we do do this moratorium, and someone did apply for a 100-foot, 25-foot height sign, how long is the process for approval of that?
Usually just a few days if everything's in...
So I'm just wondering how long we have if we needed to amend it to maybe change the height? Would you recommend us, if we wanted to limit it to 10 feet or 15 feet, is that an option, or what is your thoughts on that?
Well, we could amend this to, what we don't want to do is get more strict than what businesses today are using. The standard, I think, is 10-foot circumference.
Yeah, so if somebody were to max out and propose a 100-square-foot ground sign, the maximum height they could go is 20 feet. If they were to go 101 square feet...
And that's what they're doing today, right, Paul?
We, I can think of one, but others could. People could come in and do that theoretically. Sure. So if you want to go over 20 feet or over 100 square feet, you got to push that sign back from the right-of-way another 10 feet. But then there's additional caps in the ordinance that say you still can't go any higher than 25 and 200. So right now, it's a 20-foot setback with a 20-foot height maximum. That's, the largest sign you can do is 100 square feet.
Does that answer the question? I think what's getting maybe lost here is that, you know, there's a ratio here.
Just to add, good, Mr. Mayor. So what we're dealing with here is a sliding scale. So there's a relationship between how large a sign is and how close it is to the right-of-way. The further from the right-of-way, the larger the sign, and the higher the sign. So we talked about the height issue internally as we were crafting this. And we felt that to push, to get the extra height, you're going to have to push the sign further from the road. So it seemed like it was a wash, that no one was going to go for more height, but pushing the sign further from the right-of-way. So we did talk about this, but if city council wants to move forward, we can look at it. But this was a loss on us when we talked about it.
Councilman Henderson?
Just one point and then a question about the applicant Friday. The point that I wanted to make too is, you know, we're dealing with a lot of things here that a lot of people don't understand about signs. One is First Amendment rights, you know, content-based information on a sign. And the other is property owner rights. Those are all things that we have to legally uphold and try to work around in this process. The question I had for you on the applicant Friday, though, you indicated that it's a much larger sign than 20 by 10. How big is that? And how can that fit into the sign ordinance?
Well, the proposed sign is 672 square feet. I believe, I recall correctly, about 14 feet tall and whatever width gets into that square footage. Our sign code doesn't even contemplate signs that large. So I can tell you right now that there's no way administratively we could approve that sign.
They would need a secret variance in the Building Club Board of Appeals to move forward, so it's not approvable as submitted.
Okay, great.
Any questions for staff from council? Councilwoman Hoderick?
The safety consideration is huge. And as a city, we took a lead. As Councilwoman Abraham pointed out, back with the distracted driving ordinance, we took heat as a city on that at the time. And now, that's a common refrain and an accepted law, if you will. I guess I want to make sure that we really, truly research and understand the safety impacts. You know, I saw one study that tells us that there can be issues with this. And I think this is new coming at us, just as texting and driving was new for our law enforcement trying to protect drivers on our roads here some years back. And I think the spirit of this discussion is that's in our DNA as a city, to be forward-looking and think about those safety considerations. So I guess I just wanted to echo and give additional voice, and I'm sure, I'm sure we all should. voice, and I'm sure, I'm sure we all share this belief. If we're pushing the envelope on safety, that's a good thing. That's who we are as a community. We've had the support of our residents in the long haul on that. And I even can remember at one point getting a call from a resident that they were concerned we weren't properly enforcing the driving ordinance. So, yes, we have property owners' rights, we have First Amendment rights, we have rights as a citizenry in our community and as residents to keep ourselves safe. I want that to be part of the spirit of our dialogue. Clearly, it's coming from our residents. It seems like it should go without saying, but let's make sure we say it, so that we don't lose sight of that as being a priority. It's more of a comment than a question. And I know you all take that into consideration, but let's be sure. And we might, I don't know if we need to add that. It was in this resolution, I believe. So, I don't think we have to add it. Just want to underline it, highlight it, asterisk it. It's important.
Any questions for staff? Councilman Hamilton?
So, if this moratorium passes, if we, or can the Building Code, the Building Code Board of Appeals provide a variance to it if we were to make the language more broadly, more broad, if some businesses that had a reasonable sign proposal, could the Building Code Board of Appeals give them a variance from this moratorium? Or is that prevent that as well?
No, that would prevent it because if you do pass this moratorium, that basically stops it from going forward. So, it could, again, they've indicated that they could not approve it as it is currently submitted because it exceeds the amount of signage that's allowed under the ordinance, and certainly is going to exceed 100 square feet as well. So, no, the Building Code Board of Appeals could not work around the moratorium.
Okay. Is there anything we can do where we at least add that step, where we could restrict things, maybe not the moratorium, but then for businesses that have a legitimate sign that would make sense, they could appeal and get that approval? Is there some option? Or is that something we'll just explore as we?
Not at the table, not right now with this resolution. It would require some research and some additional steps, but certainly, it's not outside of the realm of possibilities.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Yeah, I'm sorry to maybe be a dead horse, but I just want to make sure I understand. I think I heard that even though it's never been done and it's not contemplated, somebody still could put in a 20-foot-high sign, digital billboard that's 100 square feet with this moratorium. And I pray that no one's doing that, but I worry that we maybe aren't addressing that. And if we're here to do everything we can, we're going to feel and look very poorly as a city if next, if we pass this tonight and next week, someone comes in and says, and puts in an application with a location that's 20 feet back from the road on some other street with 100-foot digital billboard. And I express those concerns, not because I want that to happen, or I think that that's going to happen, but, you know, I'm not sure if it was you, Mayor, who said it, but, you know, that you said after I spoke that we didn't think that, you know, that doesn't seem likely or sound anticipated. But a couple of weeks ago, no one in our city would have thought these billboards on Rochester Road would have been likely either. So, I'm very concerned, and maybe I'm being chicken little here, I don't know, but I just want to make sure we are fully doing everything we can and without restricting and prohibiting current businesses who need new signage or updating their signs. I don't want them to be harmed in any way. But if, if we get an application that's for a digital billboard that doesn't fall into what this moratorium stops, we are going to be in bad shape. So, I don't know if anything could be done from the table tonight to discuss that. And I don't know what even the right word would be to do that because I understand it's a scale and a ratio, and there's a formula that creates all that. That might be too complicated to craft together right now. But I just, if there's an easy fix that somebody could address or add to, I think it'd be wise. Again, maybe I'm overthinking it and being too much of an alarmist, but I, yeah. There's a lot of streets, a lot of major streets in Troy that people would want to have digital billboards, even if they were only 100 square feet in size. That's still a good-sized sign, especially if it's 20 feet in the air. And I just have strong concerns about that, and I don't want the safety of our children to be a risk. I don't want the safety of any drivers or anybody to be at risk. And I'm worried about the blind as well. So, if that, if that can't be addressed tonight, I understand, but I just want to make sure we all know that that is still a possibility from what I'm hearing, as I hear it correct, if I'm hearing that correctly.
Thank you. My comment to that is, in the agenda packet tonight, there were some questions that were asked by city council members. A lot of the questions that we're asking right now have been asked and answered. They're attached to the agenda. For those in the audience and at home, this is available on the website. On the website, in this response, is the table standards for ground signs? And it looks complicated, but if I'm reading this correctly, if we eliminate anything above 100 square feet, and if you look, the only, that's, there's all B, H through S, O, R through C, and Planned Auto Centers in M1 are the only ones that are eligible for a minimum setback of 30 feet with a maximum height of 25 feet for 200 square feet. So, if you eliminate the 200 square feet, everyone would have to adhere to the 20-foot to 30-foot minimum setback with a maximum height of 20 feet at 100 square feet, which is there to, that's what they're putting up there today. Or am I misreading that?
Go ahead. The balance between having a 100-square-foot sign that's taller than 20 feet is to get it pushed back further. It's not all or nothing, but rather...
But it, and it only applies to zoning districts that are all of B, H through S, O, R through C, and Planned Auto Centers in M1. It's, you know, you couldn't even put a 200-square-foot in an M1, or all R in CF, correct?
You can.
This is why we have an enforcement officer.
Yeah. To answer your question the reverse way, I'll tell you where you can't put them. You can't put them in any of our residential districts, our parking district, our CF district, community facilities, and our environmental protection.
Correct.
So, those are the districts that are protected from having these large signs, which will be regulated by the top roof.
I guess the question is, if we eliminate the 200-square-foot maximum area, we're going to get the same applications that we get for 100 square feet that we've always gotten, and that's a 20-to-30-foot minimum setback with a maximum height of 20 feet, correct? There will not be any 25-foot, 100-square-foot signs.
Well, I believe, though, Mr. Mayor, that in theory, someone could come with an application for a sign that was 100 square feet, 25 feet in height, but it would be greater than 30-foot setback from the right-of-way. So, there's that, that relationship again. So, it's pushed back.
That's that rare possibility that somebody could come in and do 25-feet height, but it would have to be 30 feet or back.
But, but they would, they would be able to do a 20-foot-tall, 20-foot-tall sign 20 feet from the right-of-way.
Correct.
So, they could do a 25-foot-tall, foot-tall sign, 30-plus feet from the right-of-way. So, it's 10 more feet.
It would have to be back further.
Or five more feet in height.
Five more feet higher. Which, why would somebody do that?
But if the city council wants to move that direction, they'll lop off five feet, we could do that.
Couldn't...
You know, I mean, to satisfy Councilman Baker, if we just eliminate that whole line there that says 25 feet, 30 feet plus at 200 square foot, let's just insert that into the, into the resolution to eliminate that.
As long as it's clear, Mr. Mayor, that someone can't come in with a 199-square-foot sign. I mean, it's, it's for signs that are greater than 100 square feet?
They will, and no higher than 20 feet.
Correct.
And no further setback than 30 feet, if we just eliminate that one section. I'll move, I'll move. City Attorney Bloom, you understand?
Mayor, I'm having a hard time figuring out how to effectuate what you're looking for. And I thought that perhaps Councilman Baker was looking to have, instead of the 100 feet, to have a lower number, perhaps. And that could be an easy fix if somebody wanted to move a lower square footage number as opposed to the 100 square feet. You certainly have that option to do that. Also, if you wanted to put a height limit, you could impose a height limit as well and say that you would not, that city administration would not process any signs that exceeded 15 square feet or 10 square feet, or whatever you choose to use.
I just think this council doesn't want to stop the signage that is going on with the businesses in today, today's world. We don't want them to be penalized for this. And we have gotten requests for 100-square-foot area at the 20-foot height, at the 30-foot setback. We have a sign for...
20-foot height, 20-foot setback, 100 square feet. Yes, there's one up now on Rochester Road.
Right. I mean, if we want to, if we're worried about five feet, and if that's what Councilman Baker is, is asking for, I just, let's eliminate, eliminate the 20, the 25-foot height requirement. It seems pretty simple to me.
Mayor?
Councilman Baker?
I understand that it's not the 25, you can't put a 100-square-foot sign 25 feet high. You can only put a 20-feet-high anyway.
Correct.
You can do it at a 20-foot setback, is that correct?
Correct. 20 to, 20 feet to 30 feet minimum setback.
Right.
With a maximum height of 20 feet and 100-square-foot maximum area.
Right. Well, I guess my concern is not, I certainly don't want to do any damage to an existing, our businesses that are, that have no ill will towards the city or the citizens who just want to advertise their sign. So, I understand that. And I'm, again, I'm not there to make amendments myself. I appreciate you trying to, to work with what I'm saying. I guess, you know, to the city attorney's point, I wouldn't want to necessarily go, you know, smaller, allow less square feet. And I understand it's a complicated issue. I guess it's more of a overall concern, again, that if this doesn't prohibit somebody from doing a 100-square-foot digital billboard sign, and I guess maybe nothing we could do right now with this resolution can address that. But I'm just hopeful that we are, if we can, do discover something after tonight's meeting that can be done, so we're not up here trying to work through it and scratch our heads. And I apologize for throwing this out there for everybody. But if, if something comes up in the next week or, you know, a few days that can be done, if we can address that at a future meeting while we're in the middle of the moratorium, just so we can add further protection if necessary. Because I, again, it's, to me, it's about making sure that we are not being short-sighted in what we are putting the moratorium on when there's still potential options for somebody to come and potentially take advantage of our sign ordinance in the way that we feel that has been done this year. So, I don't want anyone to do anything that's confusing or that's going to complicate what our already complicated sign ordinance is. So, I appreciate you trying to work on my behalf, but I just, I needed to get that on the record, that that's my fear. And I don't know that there is an easy fix, other than shrinking the sign, but that's potentially damaging to other businesses in the community. And I wouldn't feel good about that either. So, I, maybe I'll just leave it at that. I'm sorry for this exercise then, but if we can continue to look at potential ways, you know, other loopholes that might be found, I guess is the concern I have. This looks like, feels like, and looks like a loophole to many of us in this city, that this company has come in and done with eight applications and eight billboards. Lines are crafty and creative, and we don't know what they're next thinking and what, what next loophole they're looking for. And I'm just hopeful that we can work speedily on this to make sure that we, nothing like this happens and surprises us at the next meeting.
Thank you. I feel confident that the resolution that was drafted covers what we're trying to do. Mayor Protem Abraham?
I think part of the concern is that the digital signs are inherently more distracting. They're brighter. I'm, I'm wondering if it's not just the size, it's the size plus the digital aspect. So, certainly, you can have a 100-foot sign that might be illuminated with LED lights, or I'll say a more traditional light. Just thinking out loud, maybe, maybe that would alleviate some of the concerns. It's not so much the size, but the digital plus the 100 square feet. Is there, is, I guess I would turn to Attorney Bloom and ask, would it be permissible to amend the resolution so that it's to put a moratorium on signs greater than 100 feet and digital? Or is that too restrictive?
This, this council can do what you want. This is your resolution, and it can be amended in any way that you deem fit. I just would indicate that sometimes we do have existing businesses who, with their identification signs, choose to have digital signs for identification. So, you know, if you wanted to amend it, you could at the end of the first sentence, that's where you could insert either a height limitation of 20 feet, if that's what you wanted to do, or, and/or, you know, prohibit digital signs from being processed as well.
I think we, I think we need to be very careful here at the table, that we don't want to write this ordinance here today. We're asking for a moratorium so that we can collectively get, as a group, with our attorney and staff, this is, we're asking for a moratorium here.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
To that point, we're looking at a moratorium period. We're not writing the ordinance here. We're, we're a moratorium from, I think what you just said. Does anybody remember? The, adding to that sentence, I mean, if we're going to do this, Councilman Baker makes a very good point. If we turn around next week or two days from now, and they come in, and these folks will be very frustrated with us that we didn't, you know. We're not talking about something permanent. We're talking about the moratorium so we can collect our thoughts and get the facts and know what we do for the long term. So, a short-term period of time prohibiting, processing any permit applications for any new large ground signs that are digital, exceed 20 feet and 100 square feet. Is that, is that kind of what we just wrapped our head around?
How many digital signs do we have today out there in the city?
I don't have a count. I really don't. Yeah.
We're not talking about eliminating the ones that are out there now. We're saying...
They're not the majority.
Just taking the time out now. It doesn't mean that down the road, they couldn't do it. It, right now, we're trying to understand our ordinance. So, we do a moratorium now. I think business owners can appreciate that we would need to do something like this, given what's, what we're going through. Do we think that's going to preclude a business from wanting to come in, that we've done this moratorium for a brief period of time? I find that hard to believe. And if it does, I'm not sure. I'm worried about it. I guess I want to balance what our needs are as a residential and what our master plan says, so.
Councilman Henderson?
You know, these signs are becoming more and more popular. I think Alibi just put a new one up a few months ago, excuse me, and Lady Janes, although it's big and kind of bright and obnoxious. It, but those are specific to their business. So, we don't want to impede somebody's ability to advertise their, their business. But what we don't want is a 20-foot sign going up, you know, Eat at Joe's in Royal Oak. You know, we don't, we don't want that. So, you know, how do we, how do we fashion the language to prevent those types of things? You know, we need to have some language in the future, and if we can do it tonight in this agenda item, to at least allow somebody that's coming in with a new business to be able to advertise their business. Again, digital is, is the way of the future. I mean, that, those signs are becoming, the technology is more and more efficient, and you can change the messages when you want for sale items... you can change the messages when you want for sale items and that kind of thing. So I don't think we want to have it so restrictive that somebody can't do business in Troy. But certainly, we don't want what's happening to happen even at 100 square feet, so.
Councilman Hamilton.
Could we amend this in two weeks if we determine it's hurting businesses too much? If we went a little more broad in a language now, could in two, in our next regular meeting, then amend this to maybe permit a little more?
You, you could reconsider a resolution that is passed at your next meeting. That is, that is a possibility, that you could reconsider it if there's a majority of council that chooses to do that.
Mm-hmm. Again, so I guess like in two weeks, if many businesses felt they were restricted from what they wanted to do, they could get back to us and we could, you know, maybe have less in the language a little more.
And also, in two weeks, somebody could come in and...
Yeah.
...find our loophole.
Right. So maybe we want to be a little more broad today and reconsider it. I think I'd support that.
Councilman Pennington.
The moratorium is only for 180 days, so it's not an extended period of time. If somebody wants a sign for their business, you know, more than likely, they're going to wait, you know, they can wait that time period, or they'll come before, you know, the committee and look for variance. I think we just need to do this, get it done, and then any, any people that come before us and they're looking for a sign for their business, this, this is something totally opposite. We're talking about these, these eight monsters are, that's not for their businesses. It's something totally different. But I think it's 180 days, we can, we can figure it out between now and then.
Councilman Henderson.
So can I move to just replace the language to include a smaller, smaller sign than 100? And anything in the future that comes our way, if something pops up in the, in the near future, maybe bring it to council and let us talk about it, or the planning commissioner, whoever has to have that authority?
See Attorney?
So, so the question is, can you move to amend by replacing the 100 square feet with a smaller number? And the answer to that question is yes, you can. And then the other, the other part of it, as far as, you know, dealing with it after, afterwards, that's a little more complicated. But, and it is a building code board of appeals that does handle appeals of signs that are denied, but that wouldn't happen for any of them that are subject to the moratorium.
Last question I propose.
Okay.
Just, just to reiterate, we don't have any businesses that are coming in, in the immediate future that are, that you foresee having signs, sign issues?
No. No one's coming in for any digital signs that would be impacted by this.
Okay, I, let me propose something. Let's, let's put a moratorium on all signs, all signs for 180 days, and give us an opportunity to, to meet, draft new language for, for signed ordinances. It makes sense, instead of trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, let's have a moratorium on all signs and for 180 days. I will move that amendment.
Support.
Further discussion?
Good enough.
Councilman Hamilton.
I would just say that, yeah, if any businesses feel that this is too broad, just get back to us and we'll, we'll work with you. But I, I support this. Yeah, exactly.
I think we can, I think we can handle a business that has an emergency sign request. Councilman Henderson.
One last point. I mean, we're, we're talking about Rochester Road currently, but is, does this specifically state Rochester Road, or is this citywide?
This is citywide.
So, so this could have an effect on...
It could. It could, it could. It could. We'll be okay for 180 days. I'm confident.
And we could amend it in two weeks, too, so.
You can do whatever you want in two weeks. Yep. Okay, let's have a vote on the amendment.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we need a vote on, on the original amendment.
Correct, with the replacement of all signs.
Replacement of all signs.
Yep. Mayor?
Moratorium on all signs.
Correct.
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Hang on, hang on. Next is council comments, and I just, I'll make a, just a couple of comments. One thing that you didn't hear tonight was a lot of discussion on, on legal stuff, because we don't want to talk about legal stuff right now. And the other, the other thing that I would just like to bring up is that, you know, this ordinance was written 30 years ago, and technology sometimes catches up to you faster than your thinking, and somebody found a loophole, and there's a reason that somebody chose Troy, okay? I have, I have a very suspicious mind, and for all of this to have happened in this, this chronological order, and for it had, they all had to be done within two weeks, you know, this is as close to some sort of a conspiracy than I've ever seen. So we need to do some digging, and we need to look at a lot of things, and we don't want to talk about those tonight, but we're going to be talking about those as a collective group. And be rest assured that we're looking at this from all angles. And stay tuned. Okay, that's my council comments. Any other council comments? Councilman Henderson?
Just a quick one, since Mr. Savinon was here with his beard, and Mark Miller's here with his beard, and of course, Dane and I support this. This is Movember, and I always take this opportunity during the month of November to recommend that men in their, in their early 50s, late 40s, go and get your men's health checked. I'm a cancer patient. At the age of 49, I was discovered with prostate cancer, and I was detected very, very early. And the results of my treatment was very positive. And so I just urge anybody knocking at the door, those, those early ages of awareness of, of men's health, go get your checkups. It pays.
Councilman Hamilton.
Yeah, I just wanted, in the J-items here, one of the items we passed is a special council study session for green space and for the Civic Center project on December 5th at 6:00 p.m. So I encourage the city of Troy to get involved with that. I know it was a huge topic this year in the election, so please watch or attend and come join the discussion, 6:00 p.m., December 5th. It's my wife's birthday, but she said it's okay. There you go. But please, please attend that. It's very important.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington.
Yeah, just a quick comment. For this, this whole sign deal to get snuck through during a very, very contentious election cycle is very irritating to everyone up here, to hear about this, these for the first time from members of the community is very embarrassing. And like I said, we dropped the ball and we're on it now.
Mayor Protam Hoderick, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Abraham.
Thursday's Thanksgiving, so just wanted to acknowledge the holiday, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And then, as we all know, the day before Thanksgiving is a somewhat dangerous night to be out driving. So as I had mentioned earlier, you know, this council always thinks of safety, distracted driving, and certainly drunk driving is a pretty big distraction. So for those who are out, please be safe. And on the same topic of thankfulness, I am very thankful for all of those who have come out tonight and who have written letters in the past two weeks. I can honestly say, I, in my two years in council so far, this was the biggest uptick in emails I've, I've gotten in probably the two years. The reason I'm thankful, even though it means I'm writing a lot more emails, is that it means the citizenry is engaged, and they're paying attention, and they're making sure that we're accountable. And that's a wonderful thing. That's exactly what this community is all about. It's exactly what keeps this community strong. It is exactly what we here on council want to see. So keep it up. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor? Councilman Baker?
Thank you. I just want to, once again, thank the staff and the IT department and City Steward for helping put together this Skype session. I know it's very unorthodox and a first-time event and hopefully a last-time event, but I really, you know, this was an issue that was important, and I'm glad I was able to participate in the discussion and communication. And I love my job as city council member and it pained me to not be there when I saw this issue come up. So I'm thankful that I was able to have this opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I hope it wasn't too obnoxious or painful to watch. I don't know what the logistics are like in your room. But again, thank you and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'm certainly thankful to have City of Troy, and deliver the City of Troy to be around so many wonderful people at the council table. So have a good holiday.
Thank you. Same to you. Any other comments from council? I didn't mean that you couldn't leave if you wanted to, so if you want to leave, you're welcome to leave. Next on the agenda are reports. Anyone on the council wish to comment on a report that was in the agenda this evening? Councilman Hamilton.
I just, I read this letter to Chief Mayor regarding professionalism of our police officers involving a domestic violence incident. And I thought it was, I'm just deeply honored of how good our police department handles these kind of issues. It was, it's amazing. So just thank you to our police for the great job you did there. Officers Bill Taylor and Tim Alter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I was going to comment on the same report. Just to build on it, you know, it was an arrest of someone, but further followed up with referring this person with the contact information for Haven. And as she wrote her letter in, she said, "It's clear the officer's experience and training gave him the resources to understand what was occurring in our household. He knew that while it was the first time I called the police, it was not the first time he has been violent." And this type of professionalism and outreach is, you know, just part and parcel of our, our city staff and in all the areas where they are professionally trained. And this is one example coming out of our police department. And, you know, when we see these in the reports and we hear these stories, on behalf of the residents of the community, I want to say thank you. Sometimes it's stories about the firefighting. We just see different letters in here, or DPW that did the extra, took the extra step. We saw the presentation tonight on that. But this is what makes communities strong, and it's, it's the caring for one another. It's the extra care that this officer did. And it's interesting that you picked up on the same thing, and please, let's continue to embrace that and continue to make that a part of the fabric of who we are.
Thank you. Any other comments on the reports? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, which are not residents of Troy and not from Troy businesses. There is no closed session this evening. Thank you for coming this, this evening. We are adjourned.